We answered for Sycor. Yep. We were like, different. But I said, listen, we could be in a burr on the shop. You know, you're like, I mean, it's so.
It's so.
I know. No, it isn't. It's okay. It's like, yes. Oh, I mean. I said, that's fine. That's fine.
I think I can help this team also. I know what times when I come down. So we start to that much. And I started the party and I begin and he sees his brain. I'm just a guy. I'm like. We see if someone came there and asked him, is someone with these teeth? And all of them just went, yeah. Yeah. Of course, they need his strokes. Well, they should get one. Of course, he should. He should do a lot of things, but I'm not the one who's still listening to him. He is.
I don't know. Little guys with guys. What's wrong with your toes? But anyway, I. So then yesterday we get in a fight. But.
Retriever looks like, oh, that was all that.
But he's got this. I see stuff, but he's, he's, he can't handle some things like this. He's.
Yeah. I signed it up.
The entire forty-seven thousand one hundred and thirteen square foot building on the subject property. This subject property has been occupied by grocery stores for fifty years. The Dominick store was there from nineteen seventy-five till two thousand thirteen, and then Mariano's came in two thousand fourteen, and as you know, just closed this past June. Staff looked at the parking on the, on the property. The existing property currently has two hundred and eighteen parking spaces, and the village code requires one hundred and fifty-seven off-street parking spaces for a store of this size. We'll also discuss in more detail later in the agenda, the property owner's request to subdivide eighteen twenty-two Willow Road to create an outlot in the northwest corner of the site. Wanted to make mention of that because we wanted to make sure that that creation of that outlot in relation to this special use request would leave enough parking to meet the code requirements for the grocery use that's being proposed. And the, the, we estimate that the eventual development of this outlot that has not been proposed up to this point could displace up to thirty of the existing parking spaces in the grocer's lot. This would leave the grocery store with a hundred and eighty-eight parking spaces. Still thirty-one more spaces than required by village code. So there's plenty of parking in front of the building there to accommodate both a new development in the outlot as well as the proposed grocer. The, I'm sorry. And also, we understand that the parking spaces serving the grocer and the outlot would be shared to a large extent. The further mitigating the chance that the grocer would have less than the required parking when the outlot is developed. Finally, the proposed grocery store conforms to the village's comprehensive plan, which emphasizes the importance of retaining a grocery store in our village center. And with that, unless the commission has any questions for staff, I'll turn it over to the petitioners after I swear them in.
The petitioners would step to the microphone, please. State your name and be sworn in, please.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you'll give true testimony relative to the matter before this Plan and Zoning Commission?
I do.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Plan and Zoning Commission. My name is Christopher Canning. I represent the co-applicant. My office address is one thousand Skokie Boulevard in Willmette. So if you know where Chalet is, I'm in the office building next to Chalet. I represent the co-applicant for the special use. Please note the reason that we are co-applicants is that, as Steve pointed out, there is not a lease between the owner of the property and the tenant, but negotiations are ongoing daily. I'd like to take a moment to thank Steve for working with us on this application process. As you can see from the application, having a co-applicant who doesn't have a lease is a bit unusual. We appreciate Steve's assistance with how best to have brought this matter before you tonight, and we also thank him for helping us to provide the proper notice to the public, who I'm sure is quite interested in what we'll be discussing tonight. I'd also like to point out Steve's excellent staff memo. When I first looked at the Plan and Zoning Commission handbook for the standards of review, I saw that the first standard pointed to the comprehensive plan. And when I looked at the plan, I saw the statement, quote, "There is a strong desire to retain a food store as anchor to this portion of the village center, whether as a tenant within the existing structure or as part of redevelopment." It was even better to see it in Steve's memo because he wrote exactly what I wrote. So I'm happy to see that Steve included it in his staff report, and that's really the reason why we're here tonight, is to talk about seeking a special use for grocery store in this location to anchor this portion of the village center. With me tonight to answer questions are John Cortese, the President and Chief Executive Officer of Sunset Food Mart, and Sarah Handlin, the Director of Marketing for Sunset. We've submitted We've submitted a letter addressing the standards of review the council alluded to. We have set forth a concept floor plan and a narrative about a type of business that Sunset operates. We do not have construction plans, we do not have renderings, we do not have landscape plans, et cetera, because we don't have a lease. What I can tell you is Sunset has operated grocery stores since nineteen thirty-seven. Today Sunset has locations in Highland Park, Lake Forest, Northbrook, Libertyville, Long Grove, and they also operate two stores under the grand food center name in Glencoe and Winnetka. The narrative that is in the packet is an overview of how Sunset envisions the Northfield store may operate. The concept floor plan is based on a preliminary view of the space that foresees a complete interior remodel. Now, the concept floor plan is just that, it's a concept, in large part because, one, we don't have a lease, two, our access to the space is limited, and three, the prior tenant still has many of the fixtures in place, which prevents accurate measurements of the interior of the building. As mentioned in the narrative, Sunset has a proven track record as a store operator and as a corporate citizen. John and Susan will come up in a moment to be sworn in, I'm sorry, Sarah, sorry, John and Sarah are available to answer questions you have. At this time, any specific plans for the Northfield store, other than the hours of operation which are in the draft motion, would be speculation. Sunset operates in seven other communities, and those operations are code compliant. Our operations here in Northfield would also be code compliant. So at this time, I'd like to introduce you to John and Sarah, have them come up and answer any questions you may have, and to the extent you need to reference anything in our packet, Steve can call it up. So John, Sarah?
If you could be sworn in, please.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will give true testimony relative to this matter before the Plan and Zoning Commission?
Yes.
Good evening. My name is John Cortese. I'm the President and CEO of Sunset Food Mart, Inc. My address, current address is seven 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 Central Avenue, and that's on Highland Park. First, I'd just like to thank the commission. We're thrilled to be here this evening. We, as Chris indicated, we are working toward conceptual plans at this stage of the game. You know, as we work toward getting a lease, our plans will accelerate quite substantially going forward, but at this time, you know, you see the renderings that you have today based on the floor plan, which are very basic. We're working with a architectural firm out of Minneapolis called Shade Design, which is a proven track record of design and development. So once we move the process further along, obviously, you know, we're here for special use, to get the special use permit to move this process forward so we can begin our planning process as well. So, thank you. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you very much. I'll start off with a couple of questions. The, the hours of operation are seven to ten, seven days a week, right? Any variation that you anticipate other than holidays and things?
Are, usually holidays are, we have reduced hours on holidays. So we're pretty much, ten, ten P.M. would be the latest. We'd be open on, on non-holiday weeks. So, but during holiday periods, there's one day a year that we're closed, which is Christmas Day. Normally, all the other holidays are just reduced hours. I think the latest were usually till six, six P.M., yeah.
Your, your anticipated plans, you will stay within the shell of the existing structure? You don't plan on building out from there?
That is correct.
Okay. And I know maybe you can't speak to something in the future, but at least you can speak to how you operate now with your deliveries? One of your delivery, what are your delivery times? What's the range, if you can articulate that for everybody?
Yeah. Normally, our deliveries Monday through Friday begin at four-thirty and they end at two P.M. Saturdays, they start around five, and we're, usually our receiving docks are closed by about noon. So typically, you know, the delivery traffic is probably very similar to what, what's occurred over the last thirty years. You know, obviously, you know, there's delivery traffic that, that's needed in order to supply and fill, but those are, we don't see those hours really changing based on delivery times.
And you had indicated that, at least in the materials that I read, that unlike a, maybe a larger grocery operation, the trucks that you utilize may be on a little bit smaller than, than something of what Mariano's had utilized in the past? Is that accurate?
So you're referring to truck size?
Yes.
There, we work with a few different suppliers that will have normal, I mean, there, these trucks are fifty, normally they're about fifty-three feet, and that's typical of any grocery operator in terms of what they receive based on the type of trucks that are, that are entering the docks. We work with several different DSD vendors that, you know, because we're unique and the product assortment that we have, we source product from very local companies that, that sometimes would be delivering to us in a smaller truck, maybe like a, like a cube, things like that, but, you know, typically, those deliveries, from the larger side of the truck side, it's, those, those trucks are like our produce distributor, which is normally a fifty-three footer, and our regular grocery distributor, which is also about a fifty-three foot trailer.
So the location of the deliveries, this location is across the river from residential properties? Have you had similar experiences of residential properties being close to your delivery loading docks? And do you have any idle, idling rules for the trucks at all?
We, our, one location has a restriction in terms of times, and that, but it's, it's very basic. I mean, it's, I think it's seven.
Now, later start.
Starts at six, six, six A.M.?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioners?
So I'm guessing you've done a preliminary walkthrough of the property. The building is older, it's been added on. As most of the residents will remember, not that long ago, there was a serious issue with the roof. Have you identified any other parts or areas of the building that really need to be addressed, updated, or out of code, or, you know, needing to be improved upon, let's say, anything to the edifice, the outside?
We, we've done some very preliminary assessment on the space. Due to lack of getting into the space, because it's, it's a little challenging, because you have to coordinate certain aspects because of the current user is there today, they're, they're in that, the current user is there till ten-thirty-one. So, but from, we've done some preliminary assessment on the space, and as far as we know, that, you know, there's, there's, there's some substantial work that needs to be done on the interior.
Okay. But most, for the most part, what I'm understanding is it would be cosmetic. I would point out that strangely, Mariano's never did away with the very strange entry system that Dominick's had, just sort of bolted the doors in place. You're going to beautify it, I'm, I'm guessing, you're going to at least upgrade the, the aesthetics, if you will.
Very, we are looking at some of the aesthetics. We, again, we're, we're in the very early planning stages to see how this is going to go. So we, we don't have the answer right now.
And then lastly, anything that can be addressed with the dock, because it seems, again, to be almost outdated with the double dock and small, like fifty-three's are hanging out, you know? Anything that could be done, more depressed or inset into the building even, anything like that?
Again, we're, we're reviewing the operation.
All right.
Until we get a better understanding how that space is going to work, we've looked at it, but that, that'll come in at a later date, once we engage a design review for our group.
It's early in the process.
Yep.
Okay.
How many employees do you anticipate in the store? At any given time?
We are, we are looking at approximately about a hundred, but not all hundred are there at the same time. So it would be about a hundred employees spread out through a seven-day period.
And what would be the peak?
Peaks usually on weekends, when, you know, usually weekend, in, in the grocery industry, usually the weekends are, are the days that are the busiest days of the week, sometimes on Mondays, but throughout, during the week, usually Tuesday through Thursday, that's typically the slower period when there'd be less employee traffic.
Fifty employees or so at any given time?
Yeah. Yeah. Fifty, roughly fifty to sixty during the slow period of time, between Tuesdays and Thursdays.
Do you have two shifts?
Uh, we, well, we start at seven A.M., so that would be, you know, figure eight-hour days, yeah, two, two shifts, based on our closing time from what was in your packet. I think we had ten P.M. At the latest, we'd stay open.
The Northbrook location has a pickup area for your groceries, whether you phone in ahead of time or you get your groceries during the day. Are you going to add that on in terms of a vestibule for that?
Yeah. We, we're reviewing that aspect. You know, we see, you know, based on any design that would occur on the front, on that elevation facing the north, we've looked at that in terms of also e-commerce, you know, pickup for things like our e-grocery program. You know, we got different delivery models for, for people who order online.
I used to live in Northbrook for about six years, so I shopped at your store a lot, and there's three things that I particularly noticed in my experience. One was how incredibly friendly your staff is there. I'm sure it continues to be, although I don't go there as much anymore, but, two, how supportive of your communities you are, and you're, you're deeply involved in the activities of the community, which I hope will continue here if you decide to come. And, three, I wanted to tell you, well, another thing that I noticed about your store is that the products that you carry are very respectful of a diverse population, which I really appreciate it, and I hope will continue here if you decide to come. The other thing, I'll give you just a little fun fact, is when you opened your new location in Northbrook, where it currently is, my husband and my, at the time, one-year-old son were your first customers. And you made a big announcement over the P.A., and it was a huge thrill for both of them. So there's a couple of questions that I have. One is along Northfield Road there where you have your docks, there's a stop sign where many walkers, bikes, kids, adults, everyone cross from a bridge that crosses the river, over Northfield Road into the parking lot, to the front of the building. Oftentimes, some of the delivery trucks from Mariano's would park along that stretch of the building up until the stop sign, which would cause other people coming from behind the truck to not see the stop sign and run the stop sign. So I didn't know if that was something, you know, you could think about when, you know, you're receiving your deliveries. Another thing that I think has caused some problems for some of our residents is that Mariano's had a different, difficult time corralling their garbage. It would often end up in the river. A lot of garbage collected along the bank of the river there, and again, on the east side of the building, along the ComEd roadway there. They also had a plastic bag drop-off for recycling, which would, they would never empty or check, and often just, it was like, people were just dumping stuff there in an effort to recycle it, but it just wasn't really being picked up very often. So I was just hoping those were things that you could think about, you know, when you're, if you decide to come to Northfield, the trash was, you know, kind of a big problem there.
Okay.
I'd like to go back to the employees again, please. If you're going to have fifty employees, might want to consider using the parking lot that's on the east side, the public parking for your employees, to free up parking in the, in the actual main parking lot, just.
We've actually discussed that with the village.
Okay.
I have a question. If the, if Mariano's has a lease until October thirty-first, if you should sign tomorrow, would you be able to take over that lease, or do you have to wait till, get possession till the end of October?
We, we would be working on a new lease. That lease would terminate with Mariano's, and we would create another lease that would be either a twenty-year, twenty-year term.
But you wouldn't have to wait till October? That's my question.
The occupancy would, right, they're, they're the occupant until the end of October.
Okay.
Yeah.
So the, the proposed Sunset lease would not start till, at the earliest, November one?
Okay.
And to reiterate, your proposed construction would take up most or all of twenty-twenty-six?
More than likely. It, it could, I mean, from a construction standpoint, it could be, you know, based on when we get design review packets from architect, go out for competitive bids. As soon as we receive those.
And until you get inside, you don't really know what you need to do.
Exactly.
I get it.
Quite a bit of work that needs to be done inside.
I just wanted to reiterate that for, for everyone.
And Mr. Chair, also, once the packets come in, they're turned over to development for a review of all that, so that's going to be an ongoing process before it even gets to the competitive bids.
Okay. Great.
Does staff have any concerns about the special use process in terms of the length of time that it takes sometimes for special use, and, and why food stores are, you know, considered special use since a specialty's been grandfathered in for fifty years? Anything you could address, Steve?
Yeah, food stores are, the type of land use. The type of land uses that we designate as special uses typically could have, and quite often may have, a larger impact than other uses on surrounding properties, such as a grocery store with parking and, and traffic, and issues such as we've discussed, and trash, you know, flying, bags flying around, noise from deliveries, et cetera. So while this has been a, traditionally a grocer at this location, the, and this has been a special use for well before my time, but I imagine that the village, that, when they decided that initially, wanted to kind of check in on how things were going, adjust things if necessary, and, and just vet some of those issues.
Okay.
And, and we're not, and, and staff reviewed this and analyzed the things that we mentioned, and we mentioned in the, in the memo, we're, we're highly supportive of the, of the proposed special use.
Okay. So to note, there, within the fifty years, there weren't concerns to circle back and, you know, address, let's say?
Well, there were, I, I mean, there's been concerns over the years. I think Police Department did a, a review for me recently, I think over, since two thousand seventeen, when their computer system was tracking complaints and particular addresses. I think we've had five complaints about noise.
Okay.
Traditionally, we would talk to the manager, they would try to address it as best they can, but by, by its nature, a grocer is going to have, obviously, deliveries, sometimes from large distribution centers, maybe regional distribution centers, it's over the, over the road trucks, which is just part of the, is part of the operation.
Yeah.
What they are suggesting in terms of their delivery hours is, are not different from what we recall, what I recall, from Mariano's and Dominick's before them, and in my experience in other places and, and working with other grocers, it's just, it's just hard for the course.
Yeah.
And Commissioner Hurd, as I said earlier, we're very thankful to Steve, because one of the first questions I asked Steve is, why is this a special use?
Yep.
And Steve, you know, sent me the ordinances over the years.
Yep.
And a special use typically runs with the use. Here, the use runs with the operator.
Right.
So, and Steve and I worked through that, and I explained that to my client, but it, it was the first question, as, when I was at Loyola Academy, one of my close friends' first job was working at Dominick as a bag boy.
Yeah.
And he was very proud to show off his union card, because he was a union bag boy, sixteen. So, so I've known this is a grocery store for a very long time.
Oh, yeah.
So, you and I had the same question, and we appreciate Steve walking us through that, and we're happy to participate in the process.
Good. And all grocery stores are not created equal, so.
No, very true.
And that what?
They're not created equal, so I, you know, I, there may be some other operators who we would really want to need, and need to vet.
Whenever there's a new owner, even though the use is the same, it's, it's the opportunity for the village and, and Plan and Zoning to review, emphasize to the new owner what, what was their previous, what were the stipulations previously, if need be, and also, you know, every owner might have a change of hours, want to use their parking differently, want to do other things with it in, in whatever fashion, so it, it's a good opportunity for the village to, to revisit things. But what's unique is that this is a, you know, we're not starting from scratch here, you know? So, you know, if, if, if you were building something from scratch and there was never a grocer there, we'd have probably many, many more questions for you. But many questions have already been answered because of the existing structure that you plan on maintaining and, you know, improving and, and sticking with, so. Any other questions from the commissioners? All right. At this time, what we do is we open it up to the audience. We, if you have any questions or comments that you have, I'd like each of you to step forward to the microphone, state your name. To expedite things tonight, a show of hands, how many people at least anticipate they would like to share a few words? Just show of hands. Not too, too many. The reason I'm asking is we can swear you all in at one time and save some time. If ten or fifteen of you all wanted to speak, we'd just swear you in at one time, but why don't we do that anyway, Steve? Why don't, anyone who is wishing to, and you can change your mind, you're not, you're not committing to it at this point, but anyone who thinks they want to speak, raise your hand and be sworn in by Steve, please.
Okay. If you could stand and raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will give true testimony relative to this matter before the Plan and Zoning Commission?
Okay. Would first, whoever wants to be first, please step to the microphone, state your name, and ask your question or give your comment.
Jerry Reetfeld, two thirty-four Avon, just across the bridge. I want to thank Sunset Foods for embracing this opportunity. We are certainly excited to have somebody else show up in this location. When Dominick switched to Mariano's, my daughter was one of the first employees there, and we just walked across the bridge, and, and we thoroughly, absolutely missed that opportunity. I know that not everybody has that opportunity, but the opportunity to be able to walk to a grocery store is just unbelievable. So again, I want to thank Sunset for embracing this opportunity, and I certainly hope that this will go as quickly as possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up? Sir, go ahead.
Hi, Don Graff, fifteen thirty-five One Nacque Avenue. We were at the Northbrook store today. It was a fantastic experience. We were right behind the one-millionth customer, and he won a hat. It was one million behind you. Fantastic. Everybody there is, is fantastic. It's like, the setup is great, it lends itself to just a family atmosphere. A question I do have, with being open till ten o'clock, it looks like there's going to be in-store dining there, whether it's lunch and dinner or just lunch. Will this require, or will you need a liquor license?
If the Sunset Regionalists can step to the microphone, please, and respond.
Okay, I guess the question was asked if we, do we need a liquor license, and the question is yes.
Okay.
Do you plan on
Do you plan on having the dining like he asked and all that?
We are looking at a limited dining option in, in the location, so it's, again, it's space utilization, so we're definitely looking at food venues, things like that.
Thank you.
John, what, what will the banner be? Will it be Sunset or Grand?
Sunset.
It will be a Sunset.
Be Sunset, correct.
Who else from the audience would like to step up?
Fred Steinem in 141 Hap, for the Sunset family. The other agenda tonight is development of perhaps some business on the north end of the parking lot. Will that affect your interest in becoming a tenant in the existing building? And will that be in favor for you, or will it be against? Or what I'm asking is, are you, are you in favor of something like that, that you, you wouldn't be seeing the store then from Willow as cars go by compared to businesses right there at the curb? Is that, is that a question or a thought that has come up?
Might as well just stand up here. Yeah, the outlot building is still being discussed. We're, we aren't sure what type of user. I mean, it's all built into the lease based on, you know, the tenant that's going to be selected for, for that space. There's restrictions, obviously, within the lease, but we're continuing to have these discussions today based on what that, what that outlot building is going to look like.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. Chris Kurekopoulos, 1853 Bosworth. My house is right across the street. My land comes close to Northfield Road. So you as a board, first of all, you're a great fit to the community. A grocer's a wonderful fit, and we've had a grocery store here for many years. We've lived here for nearly 25 years now, so we've seen the Dominic's and also the Mariano's transition and changes and different things. You as a board have certainly hit some great points. So my question to you as the board, because we're at such a preliminary phase, there's a lot of uncertainty of design, elementation. Is tonight the decision on approving a special use, do you as a board, we as a community, have a chance to revisit some of the questions that you all have brought to the table tonight that can't be answered? Things like deliveries, things like loading docks, things like garbage. There's, there's far many, far more positive than negative, but being in close proximity of operations for nearly 25 years, we've seen the grunt of many things, whether it's garbage, and no one does it on purpose. It just needs to be brought to people's attention so accommodations can be made. Same thing with deliveries. Although deliveries may start at 7:00, there's trucks that queue up at 4:00 in the morning. There's trucks that are left overnight, refrigerated trucks, that make a hell of a lot of noise. So as a community, as a board, you've all, and we've all, brought some good questions. I think it's important that we, A, encourage and motivate Sunset to come to Northfield and do whatever we can, but at the same time, have an opportunity to truly talk about some of these things in more detail, and perhaps make some agreements and concessions that can be adhered to as part of the special use, because I believe that's what special use is, to take all these things into consideration. So that's really my primary concern. I think we have a great opportunity here, and I think we can make it better than Dominic's, better than Mariano's, because as a community, any retailer, any commercial business here will be higher, you know, frequented and appreciated if we truly work as a community and it works out for everybody. Them as a business to be profitable, and us as residents to enjoy our peaceful environment. And that's all I have to say. So as a board, do we have that opportunity to revisit some of the vagueness that we're hearing tonight?
What we're doing tonight is to pass the special use, if it does pass or, or not approve it, and then it goes before the Village Board for final approval. I think we have all voiced, including yourself, voiced certain concerns that we have that we would want to be addressed. When they go before the Community Development Department that Steve heads, these things are also going to be discussed with him, and I think frankly, the person that knows best of those issues is Steve, because he has heard all these things and has contacted Mariano's in the past and is well aware of it. And I, I don't want to speak for Steve, but I guess I kind of am, that he's going to be monitoring it, and, and when the permit process continues on, is when some of those other things will be addressed. Steve, did you want to add more to that?
Yeah. The, what I've found over the years with both Dominic's and Mariano's is, they're receptive and they're responsive to a degree, but it comes down to the store management, the day-to-day store management and the ownership. And with the larger grocery chains, that management was very inconsistent. And I would hope, and I understand, that Sunset is, first of all, they're hyper-local, and they're very responsive. This is what I've heard from other municipalities that they're in. So I'm confident that we'll be able to work from them. If, not, there will be times when there's a large truck and it's spot, and it might be, you know, a nuisance. So some, if somebody were to call and, and I were to follow up, call the village, and I were to follow up with the manager or the ownership, I have no doubt, again, based on the experience of others, that they'll be very responsive to that. However, they're, they have, they're a grocery store. So as, as you point, as you acknowledged, it's a grocery store, so there will be early morning deliveries, sometimes over-the-road deliveries with refrigerated trucks and whatnot. So there's, there's obviously going to be a balance as to, as to what's unreasonable and what's reasonable.
Sure. Understood.
But I'm, I'm looking forward to, and I really am confident that we're going to have a really good, much more partnership in terms of those issues with Sunset.
And to reemphasize what Steve said, this is the first opportunity we're going to have a local grocer-
Yeah.
-who is focused pretty exclusively on the North Shore area. I mean, it's a little broader than just the immediate area, but I think they are very well, very much aware of the general needs of this broad community, and that's why I asked the question about trucking when, when he first started, because I know that's an issue, the deliveries, and we wanted to emphasize that, so I'm glad you made those points.
And that's why I got up as well.
Thank you.
Just so they hear us, they understand us, we're clear, good communication makes good friends.
Thanks.
Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.
Thanks.
And I hope to see you in Northfield soon.
Anyone else from the audience, please step to the microphone?
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you'll give relat-, excuse me, true testimony relative to the matter before the Plan and Zoning Commission?
I'm Susan Bennett. I live at 257 Lockwood on the east side of the expressway. I don't, I don't think this is necessarily a Sunset question, maybe for the property owners. What is it, has the subdivision of the outlot been concluded, or is that in process?
Well, that, that's a question for us, actually, because the very next item on our agenda is that.
Oh, it is?
Tonight.
Okay.
So if you have more questions on that, stick around, and we're going to be addressing that as soon as this is over.
Okay.
The first item's over. We're going to get to the second item.
Okay. So that kind of goes with how that might impact Sunset. Okay. Thank you.
Please, ma'am, step to the microphone.
Good evening. I'm Betsy Barnes.
One sec. Were you sworn in before?
Sorry.
Yeah, that's okay.
I do.
(laughing). Oh, good. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you'll give true testimony relative to this matter before the Plan and Zoning Commission?
Yes, indeed.
Thank you.
And state your name and address.
I'm just wondering, I live-
Ma'am, if you could just state your name and address.
Betsy Barnes, 338 Crooked Creek Lane, the little townhouses adjacent to the new bank-
Thank you.
-the One Trust. And just a question, has, we hear the trucks as well, but is there an option in the design of the, the property, the, the building, to access, for the trucks to access from the pub-, public parking lot instead of Northfield Road? I mean, I, when you get your design figured out, is that an option? So that you're dealing with a commercial stuff instead of residential adjacent?
The issue there is there are right-of-ways that exist through that area. Steve can speak to those a little more detail, but-
Well, just to suggest you-
It, it, and it's, it's a parking lot. It's not a street, so you have large trucks negotiating through a parking lot. That's probably not the, the, the best way to address that problem. I'll be honest with you.
Just, just a thought.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else from the audience have any questions or comments? Seeing none, commissioners, any more questions, comments? Would someone like to make a motion?
Sure. I'll make a motion. Motion to recommend to the Village Board approval of a special use to operate a food store at 1822 Willow Road in accordance with the petitioner's application and supporting materials, date stamped July 23rd, 2025, subject to the following conditions, 1 through 10.
Sir, a second?
I'll second.
Steve will second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations. Good luck. I think everyone will welcome your, your presence, Steve. Okay, the next item before us is a subdivision located at 1822 Willow Road. Petitioner's name is CDG, DCG Northfield LLC. Steve, do you have any introductory comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The petitioner is seeking to subdivide the 3.3 acre property at 1822 Willow Road into two lots. Lot 1 would be 133, 465 square feet, or just a little over three acres. Lot 2, this outlot that we've already started to discuss, it would be 12,000 square feet, about a quarter of an acre. That outlot is, again, we've made, made note of already, is at the northwest corner of the property, and the proposed plot of subdivision is reviewed. There, our code has specific requirements for subdivided lots, and what is being proposed meets all of those requirements, as well as the zoning requirements for lot sizes and lot dimensions. Any future development on the outlot, again, just to repeat, would be subject to the appropriate Village Code requirements and approval processes. This, as it was noted earlier, is simply the carving up of the property into two lots, two legal, legally defined lots. The, the petitioner has not proposed any development at this point in time, but certainly is intending to develop something, a tenant's space or building in that outlot. And that really is the, the essence of what's being proposed and, and our review of that. If the commission has any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
Is it the subdivision that we have in our packet that shown as Lot 2?
The outlot is Lot 2, which is 12,000 square feet, and again, would be at the southwest corner, northwest corner.
Can I ask why it's irregular shaped?
If this is it here on the, this is the proposed plot of subdivision, the outlot is bound, this is, these are the boundaries of the outlot, taking up this corner here.
Was there any reason for the, you know, nonlinear sort of boundary markers for?
The applicant would have to speak to that.
Okay.
Yeah.
The petitioner would like to step to the microphone and state his name and be sworn in, please.
I've already been sworn in.
He's already sworn in.
You've already been sworn in?
(laughing) Good evening. My name is Peter Friedman. I'm an attorney with the law firm of L. Rod Friedman in Chicago at 350 North Clark, second floor in Chicago, 60654. I am representing the owner, the petitioner, specifically on the subdivision plot. As Steve said, and then I'm happy to answer any questions you all may have, as Steve said, the, the subdivision and the creation of Lot 2 meets all of the village's requirements. The subdivision and zoning standards, including parking, specifically including parking. I would say also that the, the, the outlot is critical to the economic viability of the property and the lease, so it's, it's very important that the ownership have the ability to do something with that outlot, to give a sense, as, as we've discussed already, the lease has not been finalized, so giving a little bit more detail, it's all subject to finalization, but we are not talking about a large building on that outlot. We're talking about something around 3,500 square feet, which would only require 12 spaces, so leaves plenty of spaces for the Sunset Foods operation. Will still be over the required parking on the, on the property under the zoning code. The, the, there will be, again, subject to finalization, there'll be cross-parking for, shared parking for all customers of Sunset Foods and the outlot operation, so customers can park in either parking spaces if necessary. Employees of the outlot, though, will be parking on the outlot to, to make sure that that doesn't impact Sunset Foods.
Next, will you state that? Employees will be parking-
Employees of the outlot will be parking on the outlot.
On the what?
On the outlot.
Okay.
Yeah. The, I should have started by, I also want to thank Steve and the village staff and the village manager and the village attorney's office. We've had a lot of discussions leading up to this. We have not finalized the use of the, the outlot. It is one use that is a potential as a financial institution. We're going to be looking to the board to make sure that that's not an objection. We know, as Steve just mentioned, that no matter what use we put on that outlot, including a financial institution, if it requires a special use, we will need to get a special use, we will need to satisfy all the standards and go through the process and get that separate approval. That's a part, and in addition to the subdivision that we're seeking tonight. And I think that's all I have. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Steve, do you want to-
I guess I would throw it back to you, my question of, you know, the, from the benchmarks or the other indicators, why it's a nonlinear parcel.
You know, I'm not sure. I think it has to do with the, the, the angle of the streets, but I can check, and we'll get back and we'll address that before the board.
You know, if there's utilities or other, you know, underground or something strange. The big question, drive-through, which is very typical for outlot buildings, has anything been bantered or discussed? Because I'm going to tell you, it's going to be a hard sell.
Yeah, if we, if there's a financial institution, it will have a drive-through, so we're going to have to go through that process, but that's, that's what we're looking to get an indication from the board of whether that's going to be an issue or not.
I'd just add that a drive-through facility is a special use in and of itself, so-
Right.
If there's a drive-through, it would be vetted through the special use process.
Yeah, and that's something we will discuss-
Yep.
-if that comes before us. Any other questions?
So you're expecting one, you won't split that into two different-
Buildings?
Small, yeah, small.
No, we're expecting one building, one user.
One occupant.
That's the anticipation, subject-
Not fully, you're the occupant.
Yep.
And you also anticipate accessing, I mean, pedestrian traffic can come off of Northfield Road and Willow Road, but vehicular access would be through the parking lot?
Correct. Correct.
Any other questions?
Any other questions? Audience, any questions for this item before us? Please step to the microphone and be sworn in.
Relative to the banners before this Planet Zoning Commission?
I do.
Thank you.
Tom Neiman, 2021 Old Willow Road, Northfield. Would the ingress and egress remain the same as it is today off Northfield Road?
For the, you mean, the parking lot?
Driveways, for the overall, for the grocery store. And would the special use be able to include a new ingress or egress? Or would we keep the ones that are there today?
That's a question. You guys want to step up and?
Chris can answer this, too, but I think it will be the current configuration for the ingress and egress.
Yeah, and the village wouldn't, would not really contemplate a driveway off of Willow and frankly, probably not want to see the existing driveways on Northfield Road, particularly the northernmost driveway, to move any closer to Willow.
Right.
So I think at least in our discussions with the owners and their representatives, we've made that clear and they don't have an issue with that, at least, yeah, at this point in time.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else from the audience? You've already been sworn in, so go right ahead.
I think as I view this, we're dealing with two different animals right now. So I think this is also a good question. We're, I think, talking to our friends at Sunset Foods, what are their thoughts? Would this be a deterrent to you? Would this be, would this negatively impact your operations at peak performance, knowing the amount of parking spaces we have, living in the neighborhood for a while? There have been many times where the Dominics and the Mariano's parking lot has been pretty full regardless of how many parking spaces are truly required. So I just want to make sure that we're biting off, we're not going to bite off our nose and lose a good local grocer that would view this as being a negative impact to their operations in their mind, to have them walk away from a much larger equation as far as this being a requirement for the property owner. I guess it could be viewed in two different ways. Because as the property owner is negotiating with Sunset Foods, if Sunset Foods feels that that outlet, the outlot would be a negative impact, then perhaps they could work that into their negotiations and make it worth, make it worthwhile to the property owner, if in fact that would be a negative impact to Sunset Foods. That's kind of my view on this. So right now, we're kind of looking at two different things. I think if you ask the community in the general, this room by itself, everyone's going to tell you, we want Sunset Foods here, much more than we want to see an outlot, and we don't want to lose Sunset Foods.
Yeah. I think the Sunset Food owners allude, but I'm going to ask them if they can respond, please. But I think they did allude to the fact that they are aware of it and that that was part of their negotiations. But please, if someone could respond to that.
I think it's actually quite the opposite. I think the, as I said before, the economic viability of the property and the lease is, that outlot is critical. And so the fact that the outlot is there allows an economically viable lease with Sunset Foods to be entered into. So I, Chris can talk specifically for Sunset Foods, but they are, the outlot and the main property and the lease are very much tied in a positive way.
And so from the absolute beginning, the landlord has made that known to us and it's been part of the negotiation. Without going into the negotiation, Sunset has, however.
Can you speak in the microphone, please, just for people who are watching?
Sunset has made the point that there are certain uses that would be more disruptive than other uses. And that, again, has been ongoing through the negotiations.
Okay.
But we're not going to go into details.
Understand. Thank you.
The owner's been transparent from the beginning.
Thank you.
I think I, I think I stated my point.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Would someone like to make, or, oh, someone? Oh, please, step to the microphone. Thank you. And be sworn in, please.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you'll give true testimony relative to this matter before the Planet Zoning Commission? Thank you.
Carolyn Holtermann, 308 Hap Road. About the logistics of the, separating the lot, so I'm assuming it would be two separate things, are they going to be separated by like curbs, you know, or is it going to be a flow like it is now?
At this stage, it's just separating the two property lines and two separate parcels will be created. How they want to develop that is subsequent conversations that they would come before us if necessary.
I see. So they could decide to have that egress onto Northfield, the north, the northern part, their own, and then the, I'm just wondering, you know.
Well, that egress to the north is not within the boundaries here.
Okay, yeah, it's hard to see.
Yeah, yeah. It's south of where that southern line is.
Okay, okay.
So it's not part of the outlot.
I see, okay.
That would service the grocery store parking lot and probably service the outlot business, too.
I see, okay, yeah.
But as Steve alluded to earlier, that's probably not going to move.
Yeah.
The village would have some issues with that if it's moving closer to Willow Road.
Right, right. Okay, okay.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else?
Do you solemnly, do you solemnly swear or affirm that you'll give true testimony relative to this matter before the Planet Zoning Commission?
I do.
Thank you.
Steve Ash, 445 Meadowlark Lane. Safety is an issue for everybody. We've already heard tonight talk about trucks blocking a stop sign. Building in a corner of a lot at an already dangerous intersection in terms of sightlines and pedestrians and bikes crossing, I would want that to be taken into consideration. Because I think, I think a building at that corner would make that intersection increasingly dangerous. I somewhat cynically wonder how we would control the parking of the employees to adjust those 12 spaces. And I need one more thought. I, a question would be if, oh, sorry. The statement was made that development or creating the outlot is, I believe the quote, was critical to the economic viability of the development of Lot One. If the deal for North, for Lot One makes sense for Sunset and Northfield, great. I don't believe we, Northfield, should be on the hook for the economic viability of a, of another private, public, corporate entity. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Would someone like to make a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion. Motion to recommend to the Village Board approval of the proposed final plat of Northfield and Willow Grocer subdivision in accordance with the petitioner's application and supporting materials, date stamped July 25, 2025, subject to the following conditions, 1 through 5.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. Congratulations and good luck. Any further comments or questions? Do we have a motion to adjourn then?
Motion to adjourn?
And?
Second.
Second. All those in favor? All opposed? The motion carries. Thank you and good night, everybody.